And we have some our staff and new guests. So welcome all. Ms. Smith, would you like to call the role?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page present.
Dr. Win.
Dr. Win present. Ms. Dr. Stubbefield, who's going to share the screen with the agenda? And while she's doing that.
I don't know. I need to pull it up.
Appreciate it.
Hello.
Hello. Hello, we're we're waiting for Dr. Stubbefield to post the agenda and then we will quickly move to you.
Okay. So I should be ready.
Ms. Clark or Ms. Page, have you had a chance to look at the agenda?
I have.
Got it. Okay. Now like entertain, take a quick look at the agenda. The main body of our discussion will be revisiting the scoring breakdown that Mr. Carell has had a launch this this year. And some of the other items we need to just discuss that he needs from the board. So of course, we will have the initial discussion. And then, of course, the full board has to agree. And then probably time will permit us to look at the board finance goal. Because with this being October, technically, we have two more meetings, the first Friday in November and December. And there is a first semester action that we're to look at. So if you're prepared, need entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Win.
Dr. Win, yes. Okay, moving along to old business, we had a discussion. The most recent was February 27, 2025, about the use of consultants policy CJ and the new language that we added, that the policy reads, a superintendent may contract with professionals consultants in accordance with policy DJFA. Administrators may recommend consultants to the superintendent. The superintendent shall report any use of consultants to the board and provide updates as requested. And the new language that was on a third read of February 27, 2025. The performance of consultants shall be evaluated based on the district's evaluation tool, with performance being considered prior to any contract renewal. And if, for future reference, that is CJ. See general school administration use of consultants. Meeting February 27, 2025. So based on that, questions from there. Ms. Clark, Ms. Page, Ms. Page, you're new at this, so don't hesitate to ask any questions.
Is that something we're doing now or we need to approve this before we start?
No, we approve that language that is in the policy. What we have been discussing and we haven't revisited in a long time was Mr. Carell creating the, and you have to refresh our memory of the of the software that we were using, that has the evaluation scorecard. So that where it says, why it says based upon the district's evaluation tool, it may change. What we're using now may not be what is used in two years. And that there may be different tools used. So that's why it's generic. So so the evaluation tool idea has been approved by the board. No, no numerics, no numbers. That's what the board has to yet still approve. Ms. Clark?
Dr. Win, I was thinking in that, and it has been a while since we touched this, but I think I remember the board also having conversation around the verbiage of if although they score a certain way, can they still be used or not?
Yeah. Just getting to the the discussion, we had to back up to where we least. Okay, so then is the attachment and and stuff know how we going to move forward a lot of our committee meetings, we're on meet Google Meet platform and this agenda is indiligent, right?
Correct.
Yes. So unless you can manipulate two screens, it's going to be or two computers, it's it's going to be a challenge, but we're going to make it through. Okay, so really that the bulk of this meeting is for Mr. Carell to bring us back into this zone. Please refresh our memory of the the software, what you have done and how do we should proceed. Okay? Thank you. And you're on mute.
I am. No, I saw that. Okay, so the software is Contract Now, which is our contracts repository. And it's called Balanced Scorecard. And what the balanced scorecard is, is that we set up criteria for each contract, depending on what kind of contract it is, what I'm concentrating now. And if you look at that consultant's scoring breakdown guidance, I'm concentrating on the consultant's agreements and I have some that are up and running. I have like eight that are put out and what the, you know, after a period of, there you go. And after a period, a survey is sent out to the stakeholders only regarding these various criteria. What I need you all to do is decide if what I've come up with is acceptable as far as the criteria goes, or if there's something else that you want to you want to see, but I'll get back to that later. So the surveys are sent out to the stakeholders, the stakeholders apply a score, you know, ninety to a hundred percent, it's a percentage that they do. And what this is, is their guidance on, you know, what the scores could be, you know, based on their interpretation of how things are going. They fill out the survey, what the survey, the survey would then come back to me. The system logs their responses as far as the percentage goes and then does an aggregate percentage to see how well the you know, the contract holder is doing.
Okay, stop. Could you enlarge that, Dr. Stubbefield? Please. Ms. Page, can you see that?
If you could bring it up a little bit more.
Then, okay, it's going to go off of the.
Well, collapse the the side, the left hand column, collapse that.
I don't know if you can do that in diligent.
Yeah, right there, right next to the like the setting wheel. There you go. I just learned that myself, so.
There you go. Is it better on this page?
Yeah, much better. Thank you.
Scroll up and down.
Ms. Clark, you okay? Have you seen, do you have access to this, Ms. Clark, other than the screen?
Yes, I do. I'm here with you.
And so how I came up with this is basically listening to you all, you know, ask questions you know, in board meetings and things like that, that, you know, how does this influence student academic performance? Student engagement, participation, you know, how does it meet the goals? And then I kind of came up with some other stuff, you know, so whether this is how you want me to score these, it's up to you, you know. We could change it, you know, I just need your feedback on what I've come up with.
Okay, let's let me stop. These, and if you can scroll up and down, Dr. Stubbefield.
On student, yeah. First one is influence on student academic performance. The second one is student impact, impact on student engagement and participation, achievement of defined project goals, quality and relevance of content, engagement and presentation skills.
Okay, now these survey and who, how do you define stakeholders, Wayne?
Stakeholders are the people who send me the agreements. And so stakeholders are the ones that initiate the contract review. I ask them questions about, you know, who all is participating in this? If you if you look in here, you know, if they want to do subsurveys like of students or whatever else they're allowed to, but I, you know, I don't see those. It's just, you know, the feedback that they get, you know, that they see as stakeholders. And, you know, if they if they want a teacher involved, I can do that, but they need to tell me who it is so that the survey can go to them. I need to know the email address for that.
All right, and when Ms. Clark says she remembered is that what we did not determine is essentially what's a passing, what's a failing score.
Right. You said ninety percent was passed.
And I said that that
Well, I've heard.
Down in flames.
I think there was a combination of things.
When I just see ninety and over, like I said, I'm just, you know, listening and trying to, you know, yeah, come up with with something that will work. So if I miss, if I misheard you.
No. As I said, that wasn't acceptable, so we need to determine.
Mr. Carell, if I'm, Dr. Win, if I may, I think it was, I think it was the score came into play, but I think it was more of just because a vendor scores a certain rating, does does that mean that we cannot use that vendor? Like, is it still up to whoever to make for discretion? I think that was part.
Yeah, what you're going to get from me, well, when the contract comes up for renewal, you'll get a report from me outlining basically what was, I think I have a draft of it that I can tell you about it. And so I was working on it here.
Wayne, do you want me to stop sharing so you can share?
Yeah, stop sharing and I'll show I'll show this.
And we'll make sure every board member has a copy of this, all the paperwork we have. Because it's been a while since we visited this.
Okay, so window here, evaluation. Okay, and so can you all see this? Okay. I'll make it bigger.
Now we can.
Okay, very good. So, you know, I'm coming up with a template consultant evaluation report, which will accompany the agreement that comes to you for the renewal. There, you know, there's an introduction that basically tells you how everything was scored. This this is the scoring as I have it now. It'll give you a summary of the results. You know, the average score and the ultimate rating, whether it's one through five. The the subdimension analysis, which is the academic performance, you know, it's kind of a repeat, I need to fix that. The strengths that they put in the comment boxes, areas for improvement that they in the comment boxes. I was I was thinking about putting a section six for recommendation, but that's up to you all. All I can do is give you the data and then you all make a decision. And, you know, when an agreement comes back for renewal, you'll have an opportunity, at least at a board meeting, to ask the stakeholder, you know, the the person sponsoring the agreement, more questions if you need it, but you'll at least be armed with the the feedback for each of the categories.
And is there any time, Dr. Stubbefield, that you all would not recommend? Would you all bring a contract for for renewal with a non-recommendation?
If we're bringing it for renewal, we're recommending it.
Right.
In the in those cases, there are some contracts that we have to do based off of either federal grants or things like that, that the score may be low, but we have to do it because that's the platform or the whatever that is required by either either that grant, whether it's a federal grant, a local grant or whatever, because the benefit sometimes may outweigh that and we may be working with them. So it just, and then sometimes some vendors have a monopoly and
Dr. Stubbefield, before you go ahead, hold that thought. While the grant may require the services, do your grants require a specific vendor?
Some of them do. And for example, well, and I don't know if we, this is not a good example, we don't pay for it. But like right now, all the title schools have to have their school improvement plans in Kansas Star. We don't have a choice not to put it in there. So it's those kind of examples, like this is your program has to go in, yeah.
But consistently not meeting our needs as required by federal or state, is there an opportunity for you or that green T director to give feedback to the departments that they're not meeting the needs of the district and the student?
Yes, we have an opportunity to give feedback, but in some cases, it may be the only vendor that provides that service.
Okay.
Your entities that have a monopoly on certain.
But that is unique. That is not.
That's unique, but it's real.
It's got it. Questions thus far, Ms. Clark and Ms. Page?
That helps. I like the categories that are set up. I don't have a question. And it's good to know if the grant says this is what it has to be, that we understand that. And then is there any way to renegotiate that? If we feel that it's not really meeting our needs, this particular company that we switched to something else, would they allow you to do that?
Yeah, it all depends on the company or the grant. I mean, you know, we can talk to the company, but, you know, grants are usually pretty stiff on, you know, whatever they do, but you know, what I can do is I can do an extract from the agreement if there's a requirement. And I'll put in the, you know, I I don't know if you saw me typing this, I said add grant requirements and slash summary. I can do that. Right, yeah. So part of Contract Now. I'm going to share my screen again. See if I get to where I can see what I'm doing with you all. So hold on, I'm sorry. Okay. Show window.
You know, this is our new normal now.
I know, I'm still trying to learn.
We're all there. We're all learning.
Okay, so, okay, so you'll see these agreements and what I'm going to do is I'm going to open. So I'm going to look up an agreement, just just anything here and show you what the system can do as far as what, you know, what it extracts out of there. Because it's going through this, I'm pretty sure that it's and let's do this one. Okay, so what the system does is automatically, using AI, it extracts the contract summary. It also tells me what our internal obligations are, you know, based on, you know, the district's part of the agreement. And it also tells what the external obligations are, what the other side's part of the agreement is. And it gives me the summary. And so, you know, it won't take a ton of work to pull out the obligations that we have, whether it's a sole source thing or, you know, whatever we have to do that's contract related as far as renewals or anything like that, it'll it'll populate here. And so I should be able to find it. And, you know, it'll, I can also actively search the agreement itself. Because it'll do an OCR of the agreement, optical character recognition, and I can search any word in the agreement. And so I do a fairly thorough summary when I send you the report for you all to consider.
Now, we know AI is great, but do you ever think you have to verify what you?
Oh, yeah, I always verify. You know, one of the things that they have on AI all the time is that it can be wrong. And I believe that, you know, it's just, you know, GIGO, garbage in, garbage out. I always make sure, I always make sure that, you know, it's it's accurate from my experience and I'll double check it against other sources too. And if I have a question about anything, I'll definitely call the vendor.
So this is the second year, going to the second year we've used it, correct?
Yes, and it keeps getting better all the time. They updated the AI feature of its like last week, and so it gets more detailed. And so, you know, I'm hoping as the year goes on, they'll add more features to it.
Great, great. Okay. Ms. Clark, Ms. Page, questions, comments on this thus far? We've got the, and help me again, what's the cost of this to the district?
Um, it is under twenty thousand. It's like nineteen right now.
Okay, and that's per year?
Per year.
And do we have any other additional cost?
Um, no.
Okay, okay, all right. And it's and it's renewable, one year each year and?
Yeah, I just sign one year agreements on those things, yes.
Okay.
Just to make sure that we're adequately funded.
Okay. Questions, Ms. Clark, Ms. Page?
I don't necessarily have a question. I think my comment would be, I agree with making sure that it's indicated somewhere. Those that are maybe connected to a grant or just like there's not an option in these situations. I agree that that should be documented somewhere and easily able to see.
Okay, shows that we're limited in there are some limitations, otherwise there are no limitations.
Correct.
Wayne, when you collect your data, could we just add that it's grant funded to the what's the?
Yeah, I I typed that on there and whatever report I create will have whether it's grant funded or not on it.
I would think at least knowing the source of the money might help add some context to any anything else that we gather data wise. Thank you.
Right, sure. And then, you know, if it is grant funded, you know, I can tell by the GPP and I can put a little more detail on it as far as, you know, what grant it is and, you know, I can put some of the grant requirements on the summary as well.
What is the stakeholders you'll have from time to time, range from two to twenty?
Range from one to three or four, you know. So it it just, it just depends, but you'll know who the stakeholders are when I submit it to you, you know. There's some people that initiate the agreements and then leave. I'll put who started it, and if they left, I'll put who their replacement is on there as well.
Okay.
That I know about.
Right, and just to go back, the the board needs to have some conversation and make some determination on on performance.
Period, yeah. So as far as the consultants go, and then if you look on that second page, I can I can share again and.
Yeah, please. Is it types of agreements to score? Is that what you're looking?
Agreements to score, window. I'm trying to share, it's taking us time.
You're doing a good job.
Yes.
Show my screen anyway.
Yes, we can see your screen.
Okay, very good. Okay, so.
Take out your side columns, please.
Yeah, I know, I'm I gotta, I'm actually trying to do it on on the visual, so hold on a second, I will. Okay, that's the rollout plan, that's not it.
So talking to Mr. Carell in the hallway, we just had a brief conversation about categories. This does present us with five categories. At now, Mr. Carell, let me, at least five are these?
These are, you know, the, you know, five. Yeah, I I just limited the five and there can be more if if you want it that way, but I was just you know, trying to keep it simple for at least a while.
Okay, Margie, please.
Oh, yeah, sure. Get rid of this.
Okay.
So education consultants and trainers, those are what we're doing. Okay, next up would be speakers and workshop facilitators. I think that's an easy one to do.
Can we go back to education consultants and trainers? All right.
Yes.
Where it says professional development providers working with teachers on strategies. Are consultants and trainers also used for staff?
Yeah, like Head Start uses consultants for staff. I mean, staffing, you know, we were talking about staffing and down here. Staffing. If you wanted to, those, but yeah, you know, the consultants, I'm trying to think, who does consult, I mean?
One example that I gave was contracted services, so like proximity EFS. The contracts that he said uses for staffing, because that's.
Yeah, that would be, that would be this one.
Yeah.
Right, that'd be number five. So so that then answers my question why number one is limited to teachers. Okay.
And here I'll try to get it all on the screen, can you guys?
That's okay. Okay. Number one, any comment, Ms. Clark, Ms. Page on educational consultants? These are, this is just a category of who would be in which contracts would be reviewed and scored.
I I don't have a question. I think it's good because when we went to Cube, they suggested that if we weren't getting our bang for our buck, that we need to reassess whether we're going to keep this up, because, you know, it'd be foolish to keep doing the same thing. And we're not getting the results we need, and this would help.
And and Dr. Stubbefield, this is the only, this is a specific, I mean, Wayne did it, he knows what he's doing too, but for education consultants and trainers, this is predominantly how they're used with teachers on strategies?
It's professional development, it typically is, I think, the broad category of strategies that improve instruction because they typically are providing some sort of strategy or something that is required that we have to, they have to be able to deliver. So I think, and Ms. Walker, I know is on here and she monitors a lot of the federal grants. But I think the broad topics of strategies and curriculum alignment would cover anything that they would be doing.
Great. Ready to move on to Clark and Page?
No, I'm good.
Same. Same, okay, okay. Yes, speakers and workshop facilitators, motivational speakers. Facilitators delivering specialized workshops. And the reason I'm asking us to look at this, because your criteria for evaluation is linked to this, correct, Wayne?
Right, there'll be new criteria for each of these. And what I would do, I would create a library which will help me just cut and paste. When I'm creating the surveys to make sure that. I'm at, because there's no, there's no one size fits all survey.
Right.
You know, I, I want to keep it limited. I just want to do like five categories because. You know, fatigue and filling out forms is a real thing. Um, I do it all the time, and, and I don't like doing anything that's too long. I don't want to put a lot of people through, you know, I just want them to set a percentage to five different categories. Add comments if they want to, and then hit submit, and it'll be done.
Okay, great. Three, tutoring, tutoring, academic support services.
I'm sorry, you broke up there, I didn't hear you.
Just we're moving to number three.
Okay.
Number four, educational software and technology providers. Hmm.
So the ones that you guys want to do, like I said, I would create the criteria and send them to you. And let you look them over, and make sure that I'm on target.
Okay. So, one, sorry to disturb you again, Dr. Stubblefield, does proximity fit number four? Educational software? Or they can be?
No, they would be five. It's not, there's actual people. They're like, it's a, it's a staffing. We don't.
Got you.
Software is included, but they, they would fall under five.
Okay.
I go IXL or something like that for four?
Four would probably be IXL, iReady, any of those, um.
Digital Coach?
Yeah, if we still had it, we don't have it anymore.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright. Can I jump in here for just a moment, Dr. Wayne?
For one, I can give an example of a software that uses people is, would be Ignite. Um, it's a reading program, tutor program, fully funded by a grant. But it's not really, well, I guess it would be specialized support service. I take that back, they will be five. So we'll do that too there, yeah.
Well, of course, stakeholders would. Define the list as well, put it, identify which category to go into as well. Yes, Ms. Clark?
That kind of leads into my question. So I was trying to figure out for three. An example of three, because if I understand correctly, a lot of our tutoring services are more volunteer-based, question mark? Versus. I just want to make sure three, yes, yes. Well, three, one, there's a contract would be TPT. That's a contracted tutoring service, um. Honestly, Ignite probably would fit under there because they're not tutoring, but there are some paid tutoring. If it's volunteer, it wouldn't be on here. Okay. Can go through this. Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, once we figure this, the, um, submission form. That people are going to use to submit their contracts, you know. Just because I can't, I can't always tell what they're for. I'll have them, you know, select.
Great. Checkered box or whatever, um. Anything, you want to add, Ms. Page, before we get off this, we're, we're. We're ready to, um, almost recommend all your documents, once we see. I mean, you haven't made any revisions, or we haven't asked for any corrections, so, um.
No, once, once you guys are okay with two, three, four, and five, I'll create the, uh, the criteria. The review criteria, and send it to you for just a, a, a looksee. You know, whether you want to do it. I don't know, I don't know when you do it. I think you do it in an open board meeting or anything, but in one of your meetings, you, you. Talk about them and approve them, and then I can start. You know, including those agreements in the surveys I send out.
Right, we can approve the five categories, types of agreements to score today. And then, of course, we recommend to the full board. So, we have the types of agreements, we have, um. What was the other sheet you, you had, did you have the Gatekeeper Balanced Scorecard workflow?
Um, my, 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 you know.
What is that? That's, that's type of agreements. What's your other form?
My other form?
That you showed us first. Dr. Stubblefield showed us.
Yeah, there, there's nothing else that you all need to show.
Uh, we, we do need to approve your, or at least see the.
About the scoring breakdown.
Exactly, consultant scoring breakdown guidance. Uh huh.
Right.
Consultant scoring. Yes, please.
Of course, I closed it, so.
And do you? Let's see, the Gatekeeper Balanced Scorecard workflow is.
Oh, that, that's a, that's an old document, um.
We're not using?
You know, if we kind of evolved from it.
Okay, so we're, that, so we're only looking at two documents to approve, to recommend to the full board.
Right. I can't find that now. So, hold on. It's on, it's on, it's on my desktop.
It's identified as consultant for you, Ms. Smith, consultant scoring breakdown slash guidance draft.
I don't know why I closed it.
So, right.
It's reopening the, the wheel spinning, but it's taking a second. Okay. Oh, there it is, okay. Yikes, okay, so sorry, I'm, uh. So you see it now?
Yes, so, Ms. Clark, Ms. Page. We're looking for a motion to approve for recommendation to the full board. Document number one, consultant scoring breakdown guidance as a draft. Just scroll down a bit, please.
Okay, yeah. Hold on, something wants me to say.
There you go. And the second one we just looked at entitled types of agreements to score. There they are.
Sumo. Second.
We're moving to seconded discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Clark. Well, again, we're recommending with, with still understanding that. The, um, there are some, there are some grants and some consultant contracts that there are limitations. And that we haven't determined what the. I don't know if this is a proper use of this term, cut scores are, who moves forward, who doesn't. But right now, we're just looking, we just proved these two, these two, uh, documents for recognition to the board.
That's, that's it, that's the clarification. I just wanted to make sure, and that's what I was getting ready to talk through, is just making sure we were in alignment. That this is the recommendation for the scoring only. We have not touched whether or not, um, this, how the score impacts the decision, so.
How the score impacts the renewal?
Yes, yes.
Decision for renewal, okay. Question, comments, Ms. Page? This is kind of your first time seeing this.
No, I, I like, again, thank you.
You're drinking water from a water hose.
Yeah, yeah, I, I appreciate you doing that. Because when I first saw something like that at Q, I thought it was excellent. That we need to make sure we're getting our bang for our buck. And this is one way to do it, and then once we work out the second part, we can be in one accord. And show the public that we're doing the best that we can with their funds. And making sure that things work.
I know this is a quote from a movie, it's like Moneyball or something like that, it's about getting down to one number. You know, um, so you can evaluate things based on that, and that's what you'll see. In the scorecard is like, you know, uh, with the aggregate, it'll be like, what, ninety-two percent or, or whatever? I showed you this before, in fact, meaning that, how things look and. You know, you can see the history of the agreement as well, you know, going up and down. Um, you know, see the trough, see the improvements and. Um, it's, it's, it's a pretty good tool and, uh. You know, hopefully it helps you all.
And what is added additions that you like working with the, the tool?
Well, yeah, I mean, anything, anything new, like I said, I give, I give new a big hug every time, just, you know. That things have to, things have to move, and it gets our old ways.
Ms. Smith, call the, call it for the vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Dr. Wayne.
Dr. Wayne, yes, and we're looking to schedule a board meeting. Okay, um, Mr. Carell, we could not access the action plan. It's only been many months. That was more, that was. You remember, that was more of the kind of like strategic plan for the finance business. What's your department called, finance?
I wasn't, I wasn't sure what you were talking about, so, yeah, I'll, uh. I'll get that to you.
Alright, so I need a motion, I need a motion to table item B under O Business, please.
Sumo. Second, I'm sorry.
We're moving to second, um. The action plan was, was a, um, describe the action plan, Mr. Carell.
Well, I had it, and, you know, I think, I actually think I have it right here. I'm just kind of trying to find the right folder, because I have a, a board folder on my desktop. And what it was, was, you know, all of the things I was going to. Do with regard to purchasing. And I think I can find, I, I'm not, oh, hold on a second, there it is.
Well, it.
Yeah, all the contract reviews that I do, my desktop just gets cluttered with, uh, tons of.
It's a compilation, yeah, it's a compilation of what Mr. Carell, listening to our conversations. Really anticipating questions and requests from him, do you find it? No?
Um, no, I'm not seeing it right now.
That's good, we're going to table it anyway, so, um. Ms. Smith, we'll table it till November of the next board, uh, next finance committee meeting. Um, call the rope, please, on tabling the action plan of the purchasing department. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark? Yolanda Clark, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Wayne.
Dr. Wayne, yes, so we've tabled the action plan. The, with, with the getting, Dr. Stubblefield has to leave it too, and, and. Ms. Clark, do you have to leave it too?
Uh, I can be here, if, if we continue.
Okay, we won't go past two, two thirty, but there is now, um, the board finance goals. We, um, I don't know who can share that. We, we looked at this at the retreat on Monday. And we did not. Do anything but kind of discuss it. Because if we look at, once again, the goal of the board. When it comes to financial planning and the. Action steps and the first semester activities. We have a lot of work to do. Um, it reads that the objective is to align financial decisions with strategic investments that eliminate disparities and maximize student outcomes. Um. Go ahead. You're going to join. I thought someone was explaining things. Um, if you look at the action steps after we. Understand what aligning financial decisions with strategic investments. That eliminate disparities and maximize student outcomes, after we decide what that entails. You see underneath four enhanced action steps. One, creating a transparent financial decision-making framework through the finance committee. How are we going to do that? Collaborate with financial staff to ensure long-term sustainability. Of student-focused investments. We have to identify what student-focused investments we're talking about. Determine the minimum cost in mills to operate the Kansas City, Kansas School Edition, or remember, these, these, these are board goals. But that this coming under. Some of the activities of the finance committee. Prioritize funding for programs that close opportunity gaps and support post-secondary readiness for all students. And then the metrics for first semester, and I guess I need to ask for clarification from you, Dr. Stubblefield. Um, what was, and we did not clarify, oh, don't reduce.
Dr. Stubblefield, you're on mute. I had to read my screen to see if I might to do that, so.
Okay.
I was saying that, and then I get big again, so. Um, what I was sharing, what I'll share, when you look at it, those four things for the entire year. However, for first semester, your metrics of making progress. So the first one. We've done, or you're in the, you can still go back and adjust this. Development of the district budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, you did that when you approved the budget. Um, ba- based on the building needs assistance, so.
Right.
This school year, that you have done semester one. The second one, that's the one, monitor process compliance, assess forecast accuracy, track initial impact of investments. Those are the things like you're putting in place right now, with what you just, we started with Mr. Carell. And then as we have our budget meetings and you're looking at the departments and that sort of thing. Um, and then whatever else you determine that you might need from staff. And then the third bullet for first semester is compare financial decisions to outcomes, refine forecasting methods. Evaluate investment effectiveness while considering unintended consequences. So, as you, as we look at those contracts, when you get the update. Actually, it's in December, when you, so you just got the cap assessment baseline, but then. When you get the update, um, in December around the KISA outcomes progress. Those will be tools that you can cross-reference, um, from some investments and then whatever else you deem. You would need to refine the forecast, so some of these things will, um, as you. Lay out the agenda for the special budget meeting, when you're reviewing department budgets and looking at those things. Um, in conjunction with what we just did, we could probably get you through. Um, those first three bullets for your metrics, but then if you back up to your bigger action steps, you. Creating a framework and that sort of thing would be important to do, but. Um, I don't know which order you would do some of those things, that's how I interpreted it, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so. If I understand correctly, and I, please give feedback, Ms. Clark and Mr. Ms. Page. The finance committee. Specific charge is number one. I mean, not us alone, but the board, we, we implement whatever the transparent financial decision-making framework is. That's what we implement. That's, that's the lens we do, you are activities, correct?
Um, correct, like, but there's not. Do you have a framework that you have agreed upon? If not, that, that would be the first step, is to create the framework when.
Right.
Right, yeah.
I think where I was getting hung up on, Dr. Wayne, just so you'll know, as we're speaking, is implement. I just, I, that's where I think I was, I was thinking about, are we implementing? I just, I, that's where I think I was, I was thinking about, are we implementing or suggesting?
Well, if it's. How else, what, help me understand why you, what the two, two, are those two? Actions in your mind?
I think so, and maybe, maybe I shouldn't be thinking about them this way, but since we're clarifying, yes.
You've got to flesh this out here because we, if we're supposed to create it. Through, through the finance committee. What, what do we do?
I think I was thinking about a final board approval. That's what I was thinking about when I say suggestion, like we are. Creating, recommending, drafting for final approval.
We don't do anything independently.
Correct, yeah, and I think that's what I was thinking about.
Who's supposed to create the transparent finance decision-making framework? The board?
It says, I think the finance, the way I read it and read it in the way I remember. The work would happen similar to what you just did around the consulting and all of that. Finance committee, and then whatever you come up with, you would take to the full board as your recommendation. They can give feedback or accept it as you. But the work of creating a transparent financial decision-making framework. Through the finance committee, the work would happen here, similar to what you just did with the. Evaluation, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Clark, Ms. Page, do you have any ideas, initial ideas? Mr. Currie, um, I think, who says on here?
Mr. Isnar, I think one of the things that we can do, uh, Dr. Win, as, uh, staff. Is to put together, um, of, a, a rough draft of here are the things that we would suggest be in a framework. Even if we had just like a skeleton of, of framework that we're like, we can, this is sustainable. We can implement it, and then you all can give feedback around it unless you all just wanted to start from scratch. We can do that. I would say we could have something for the next finance committee meeting. Of a framework and structure around, here's how, because right now we are making decisions and recommendations to you through. Some sort of process, even though it may not be like written out and shared, but then we can share that with you.
Okay. Ms. Clark and Mr. Lopez, and actually send maybe a notice out to the, excuse me, board members. To also be thinking of what that will look like, because it, it doesn't make too much sense. But we have to start someplace. Obviously, under district to do this. I mean, we're not, we're not creating and reinventing the wheel. I, I just don't know what it looks like, but that part of it, like you said, the consultant's evaluation. Um, another thing that I would like the finance committee to, to revisit. Was the, uh, the budget document that departments completed. Because it, I don't believe that it provided us with the. Then the information that really we needed, a- as, as well as they would need to say, okay, here's. Here's our department, and I discussed this with Dr. Stubblefield again, here's our department. We know who's going to retire, we know who's going out maybe on, on maternity leave or this or that. Or how our service areas has declined, that what, what do we need? And I think we need that budget, those, those, those in, actually really clear, um. Specific to that department, not the generic answers that were given. But that was the first time, I think that was used, that form was used. So I would like us to revisit that budget document. That I don't remember what we called it, but it asked for somewhat of a, what, what do you need? Um, to operate at, at full capacity. Also to, you know, I guess we could establish some criteria as to what certain. I, I, I'm not picking on you, Ms. Clark, I remember discussing like, what is the transportation? The goal of the transportation, uh, department, and Ms. Clark said, transport the kids. Well, okay, that's, that's a goal. Clearing, clear and simple, but perhaps there's something else that, that we didn't, we didn't, um, address, so. I'd ask for us to start to think of what components would go into, um, a transparent. Financial decision-making framework, um. And I guess you'd have to give us a little information too, Dr. Stubble, from time to time. From, do the exec director of these departments, um, do they start off with creating the budget? I mean, zero, zero base means you start at zero and you build, but I don't think we, anybody. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think anybody does that. I think they look at what the budget before and work from there.
I think, I think both things are happening. Some departments do, um, that's ju- like. That's because that's what they were used to, and some departments look at where they are and like, well, all of these things we need for next year. So I'm going to put that we need all of these things, um. So a, a little of both, I mean, both are happening, um, in that space. Executive directors do work with, like if, um, you were looking at the org chart. Those who are on cabinet in the departments that report to them. We're already starting to have budget conversations about next year with all of, um, the departments here. Just because as I shared with, um, you all in the special budget man, meeting. The, uh, increase of things that, I mean, the cost increase of a lot of things have gone up, uh, dramatically, just with. In the last few years, the reimbursements have gone down. And then there are some other factors that we already know that, um, and Brad, tell me if I'm wrong. Depending on what in the costs and increase we'll have and for, um, health insurance as well as liability insurance. Given the things that we've had, um, the incidents we've had the last few years. As well as, um, of just workman's comp. When we look at like the projections around that, we already know that we're, it's about. Could be upwards of ten million dollars that we're going to have to make adjustments. Before we even start to talk about all of the other things that occur, like. Here's a new something that the state or the federal are saying you need to implement. Or here are the increases that we can afford. Just off of those five areas, we know that there could be about a ten million dollar gap. From how we are funded this year, if all things stay the same, we already know that. And so we're going to have to make those adjustments, uh, and be prepared. Um, and our target is hopefully, um, by like December. So that we can know, we're going to have to restructure and do some things to close that gap.
Right, and you know, then as, as we keep talking, um, perhaps what also goes into this. Transparent decision-making framework, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Stubblefield, the, the needs assessments. The building needs assessments, that's transparent.
Yes, yes, and that is, uh, required and we continue to do that. And so that's why we're trying to look at like building principles. They're starting to look at it. In fact, we ha- we had a meeting with high school principals yesterday just to say, hey. Here are some things that you need to look, we need you to consider with scheduling and that sort of thing. So we're starting to have preliminary, uh, conversations with them about prioritizing the things that we know. Uh, we need to have in place for students, but here, where are some places that we might, um, get leaner? And but we've had it here at district office, and now we're starting to have it with building leaders. So that this is not like a shock to people when we start to, you know, finalize the budget in March and April and those.
Ms. Clark, Ms. Ms., um. Page, because you're going to have to do it anyway as a full board, that we, for the next meeting, start listing items. That would be included in the framework as the, um. Building needs assessments, the, um, oh, what else did you just say, Dr. Stubblefield? The, uh, cost, the, the cost of, of insurance and workman's comp.
Yeah, so reimbursements and the cost of all of those, the liability insurance, health insurance. Insurance, those sorts of things, yeah.
I, and I, is, is that, is that Ms. Clark and Ms. Page and Dr. Stubble, is that a, is that a, a, and to Wayne? Is that a correct way to, to at least? Look at the framework as we consider those items that, that are in the decision-making process? Is that, is that correct to consider those items in the framework?
If I can jump in on that one, so. I think when we're talking about framework, so to me, this is kind of mapping out what the next few months for all of us are going to look like. I think there's a few things that we also need to consider. So one is that we're having regular full board special meetings on budget now. Which we hadn't done this early in the past. So if we as part of this decision-making framework can kind of help compartmentalize or map out. Which groups are the right ones to make certain decisions? I think that's a good framework to start us with. Uh, so what things do you want us to bring to the finance committee? What should we be bringing to the special budget meetings with the full board? Um, we're going to bring those things to you that are budget considerations that Dr. Stubblefield just listed off. I won't go through all of them again, but those are real things that are recent and out of our control. That we are constantly having to monitor throughout the year. For instance, just the, the property and casualty insurance increase in a year after we've had not one, but now two fires at Arrowhead. Uh, increases to the premiums for that are something that we don't get until after the budget's already been created for the year. So there's some lag in decision-making on that. We're going to bring those things to you anyway as part of the budget planning and the recommendation from administration either way. Those would never be left out, but we want you to be aware that they're coming. But when we get to questions about decision-making and helping to guide us through this process, I think that framework is really. What group wants to take the lead on that? Where are those guidances going to come from? Uh, if that makes sense, and I.
Yes.
Happy to clarify.
Great, great, that, that makes a lot of sense, um. The, the mapping out, the step-by-step process, uh, the, the transparency of, of. Is, is a lot clearer, thank you, um, Ms. Page, Ms., um. Clark.
I think it's good if, if they can kind of work with the question, and then if we have more. And we share it with the board, when we come back together, at least we'll have something to start with. And then we can add whatever we need to add.
Ms. Clark.
Because we want to work smarter.
Nope, I agree.
Okay, so our task is to, for our next meeting, just to continue to think in what, what are the, what are, what's the? If you started at one and you get to twenty, we're, if you are by twenty, you are, you know, the, the decision-making. Um, clear decision-making, um, I need another word, but not process is not, is not this specific enough. But anyway, step-by-step, uh, movements, and, and we're always going to circle back to the full board. That's, that's understood, okay, um. You know, we have the next item on the agenda, operations budget board, um, discussions. And we did not have a good discussion on the, at the budget meeting. Because in my opinion, the members didn't have the budget. We were in Google meets and the budget was on, on diligent, but also we didn't have the athletic department budget. So. I would ask us, um, to go back and look at the, uh, chief operating officer. Budget, finance, purchasing, nutritional. Uh, that's why I came and got the organizational chart, transportation. Maintenance. And T I S and police, and athletics would be in the same.
Yeah, athletics is, it got moved over this year, but.
Okay, so, so it's not under operations anymore?
Under operations. It wasn't under operations last year. I think that's why, um, it didn't get put with this batch. But it is, so we can update that and get it on there.
Okay. So, so I would ask us, I, I don't know what's on the agenda for the budget meeting, but. Ms. Clark and Ms. Page will look back at the operations budget. Um, that is in diligent and then be able to. Mr. Isner, we won't need you to go over it like you did because you did it quite thoroughly, but, but the people did not have the document in front of them. Including me.
So what we will do, Ms. Page, and I'll get with, uh, Mr. Isnar and his team. We, um, I mean, Dr. Win, what we'll do is make sure we attach the athletic budget. And we can go ahead, um, and update that and put it on that agenda. But also, uh, back, like replace the old one, so you'll be able to go back and see it. Like if you go to diligent, you would have access to it, um. Probably, because we can get athletics on there like quickly, can't we, Brad?
Yeah, that's, that's probably a one-page budget, so that's.
Yeah, so we can get that on there probably early next week. Update this, um, wherever we have it now diligent, update it. But then also make sure that we have it on the next agenda, and then we'll talk internally about. We can also just have the next department there too, so that you are ready to go. And then we'll just keep adding.
Okay.
Know the department, so you'll have operations and another department. While you review the operations, if you're ready to go on the second one, you would have that one too.
The next group that I've got my team working on was the departments, um, instructionally focused departments. That fall under Mr. Hansford's.
Okay.
Umbrella, so that's kind of where we're going next, but, you know, athletics, that's easy to add on to the previous.
And that would be student services, elementary, secondary, diploma plus.
Right, and we won't include all of the school buildings budgets in that because we've treated those as different. That's under, you know, the needs assessment and the building separately, but we'll focus on the departments under that umbrella, yes.
Okay. So what I will need to do a better job of is for the next meeting of November seventh. Send out, uh, not so much the agenda, but, uh, the documents to members of the committee. So that we'll have a chance to look at them thoroughly, so we don't have to spend two meetings. Because this is, uh, we, if we're, if we're supposed to follow the first semester, second semester of the, um. Action steps, we've got to pick our game up a little bit, so, um. We will, we will look at the operations budget and this next budget after, let me start over. Dr. Stubblefield and I thought of a s- system that once the. Topics were discussed at the budget meetings, full board, if there is, i- either one way or the other. If there are specific questions, we could have them, them dig deeper in the finance committee. Uh, it didn't happen well, um, so this, our ideas are not working out too well, but we're, we're, we're working on it. So, um, please look at Mr. Correll's information. We have passed those documents to submit to the full board. We'll have a board meeting before we have the budget meeting, so we can answer any questions of that. Um, please look at the operations budgets that will be added. Uh, um, athletic will be added, and Mr., um, Isner said he's going to add the. Those departments under Mr. Hansford. When will you have those floated, Mr. Isner?
We'll have them up for sure before the deadline for that next, um, special board meeting. You'll have a few days to review them before. Uh, again, though, they're not going to be a change from what you've seen before. Again, though, they're not going to be a change from what you've seen before, other than just having the salaries updated with
Right.
increase. So if you've seen previous ones and we've received questions and answered many over time, there may not be a lot of discussion needed, and that's okay, but we want you to have visibility of them again with the changes that we have made, so.
Okay, but we have a board meeting on the fourteenth and the next budget meeting is on the seventeenth
Yeah.
of, of October. So you think we'll have them like by the fifteenth, fourteenth or fifteenth? Mr. Isner?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up calendar and look at that. So if it's for the seventeenth is what we were targeting, then a few days before that, yeah, the Tuesday or Wednesday, the fourteenth or fifteenth, I think would be for sure when they would be on diligent.
Okay, great. All right. Before we adjourn, questions, Ms. Clark or Ms., Ms. Page or anything else of us?
Nothing here, I think this was a successful meeting, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have, very informative, I'm learning a lot. And if we could simplify, where we don't have to jump back and forth, that would help me out. I don't have the two screens, so.
Yeah.
I thought it was good.
Okay.
Dr. Wynn, could I add one more thing? So one item that we are planning to bring to the finance committee first, we were prepared to talk through it today if we had time, but the collection of the board priorities for the next budget planning season, we just wanted to be able to go through what that system looks like and how we'll send that out and you'll be able to score items. So would you like to do that as part of the next finance committee meeting then?
Sure, we won't have time to do it on the seventeenth?
We could present it for the seventeenth too, if that's okay with Dr. Stubblefield.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can definitely present it because then they'll give them, because they'll have to send it out and do it again, but we can definitely bring it up to them. Ms. Page, I think what we can do in the future, Ms. Smith, you see how I just dropped the link to the, in the chat? Then people are not jumping from screen to screen, they click on the link, it minimize, it minimizes the pictures, but then you can have it all on one screen. So we just need the link in there and then people should, or you can do it individually, but we can also.
That works.
Yes, yeah.
That works.
And thank you, thank you.
That works. Any other questions, we will adjourn. None other? Thank you everybody for attending and have a great weekend.
Thank you.
We need to adjourn.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend, hope to see some
Oh, we had the banquet tomorrow night too.
Yeah, and NCAA, yeah. I know, I have basketball on my mind. Okay, bye-bye.